Good afternoon, everyone. We have everyone here, so we'll go ahead and get started. Review and approval of the minute. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any oral communications? Okay, thank you. Any suggestions, updates, edits? The only thing John and I need to discuss at some point is the May 9th board meeting at 4:00 P.M. Yeah, we want to talk about the possibility both of us are on another nonprofit board, the same board, and there's an awards ceremony we have to attend that day. So we're wondering, do we prefer moving an hour up if possible or a day before? Okay. And everyone else? Okay. Oh, do we want to, what do you prefer to do? Move it up the same day or a different day?
If that meeting runs long, we've still got a problem even at 3:00. Well, we might not. Well, we can, between Yessenia and Lilly, they ought to be able to set it up without our help.
Okay. Okay. So can, okay. Reno, can you do 3:00 the same day on May 9th?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Board, can you do that? Okay, cool. We'll just, we're going to just move it one hour up. Okay, thank, thank you. 3:00 P.M. Okay. Okay, thank you. Do, can we have a motion for the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Any second? Thank you.
And it's approved 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Second item on the agenda is city and library budget plans. Christina Holmes.
Great. Well, good evening. Thank you all for having me. My name is Christina Holmes, and I am the Director of Finance for the city. So I've been asked to come in and give a brief overview of the city's current financial position. So I'll run through the presentation. If you have questions during, I'm happy to stop and answer. At the end is good as well, so whatever works for you all. With that, I'll dive right in. And so starting with kind of a big picture overview, sharing a little bit about the city you're probably all familiar with. Escondido is considered a full-service city. A full-service city is one that provides most of a community's essential services in-house, such as police and fire, public safety, water utilities. Most cities, especially in North County, are not actually full-service cities. As an example, in our neighboring city of San Marcos, water is provided by the Viasios Water District, and law enforcement services are provided through a contract with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. That's important because it impacts the operational expenses for the general fund. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the city and provides the resources for the day-to-day services that keep Escondido running. This chart here is a breakdown of the broad departments within the general fund. This includes police, fire, public works, community services, community development, and several supporting departments, such as the City Manager's Office, finance, human resources, among many others. So 75% of general fund expenses do go towards public safety. That's for police, fire, and emergency medical services. And then the other 25% supports all other city departments. And if you're curious, the library department budget is located within the community services broad category. So as we saw on the previous slide, water and wastewater are also provided by the city. However, these are budgeted and accounted for separately from these general fund services. So this next chart is just a different way to look at general fund expenses, different types of categories. The table on the right shows this current fiscal year that we're in, fiscal year 2024, the projected expenses totaling a little over $130 million. So as you can see in the pie chart, 63% of the general fund budget goes towards employee services, primarily for compensation and benefits.
Budget year, June 1st?
We do, we run on a fiscal year, so our first is July 1st through June 30th. Yeah, each year. Funding for the general fund comes primarily from taxes. Sales tax is the single largest source of revenue to the general fund. These revenue sources are dependent on the economy and can fluctuate significantly from year to year. Sales tax and property tax are generally the two largest revenue drivers for cities. Escondido is a little unique in that sales tax is the first. If you could do comparable agencies within North County like Carlsbad, Oceanside, property tax is their primary revenue source, a much more steady stream of income. So other taxes include things like transient occupancy tax and business license revenue. Charges for services are fees that the city collects from our customers to pay for a service or the use of a facility. Examples of these fees include items like recreation classes or building fees. And then other revenue sources include investment income, rent from city-owned properties like the North County Mall, and then items like grants, permits from our building department, and everything else falls into the all other revenue category. And then this next slide is just a breakdown of this current fiscal year 2024 projected revenues, with sales tax at 39%, at $49.5 million. So if you noted, comparing the two charts between the slides, operating revenue was projected at $127 million, while operating expenses were a little over $140 million. So we did start out last year, starting into the budget cycle with an about an $11.3 million budget deficit. So as many of you are likely aware, the city has been dealing with a general fund structural deficit for several years. So this next table is a summary of the actions that staff took and city council approved to close that general fund deficit. All actions, with the exception of the historical cost savings reduction, were from one-time sources of funds. So really, starting this last fiscal year, we started dipping into some of the reserves funds that we have set aside for liability claims, fleet replacement. So we've pretty much depleted all of those funds, or deferred the replacement of vehicles into future fiscal years. And then the American Rescue Plan Act, which I'll bring up again later on the slide, those are one-time bonds that the city received in 2021 that have to be spent by fiscal year 2026. So limited source of funds with an end date. So while we did close the budget deficit for this fiscal year, using one-time sources of funds and reserves does not address the general fund structural budget deficit. On June 7th of 2023, a budget workshop was presented to city council that showed the projected general fund budget deficit and provided different scenarios and programs for the services the city will need to consider eliminating when all available one-time funds and reserve balances are depleted. So in this chart, anticipated revenue is shown in the blue trend line, and anticipated costs for providing current city services is shown in the red line. So the fiscal year 2024 deficit closed with one-time sources, but did not address the future budget deficits. The average annual deficit over the next 20 years is about $18.2 million, and over the next five years, the average annual deficit is $10 million. So at this pace and with no major changes to the city's sources of revenue are operating expenses, all reserves, and one-time sources of funds that we know of today will be depleted in fiscal year 2029. So as I mentioned, the city's been aware of the structural budget deficit issue, and over the past several years, the city has taken steps to address this budget shortfall. The city's maintained a hard line on expenditures, and staff are continuously seeking measures that ensure efficiency while also enhancing basic operations. So this is kind of a general broad overview of some of the ways that the city has controlled and decreased spending, reducing staff by over 106 full-time employees since 2022, or since 2008, I'm sorry, to 2022, as the city's population grew by more than 10%. The city has been able to negotiate with our bargaining units, employees picking up a larger share of pension and employee benefit costs, so that's resulted in some savings, formed strategic partnerships. LSNES is one of those major components to provide services using a slightly different business model than what the city had used previously, investing in technology. And then each budget cycle, we take a look at what's needed, and the city's deferred maintenance, we estimate it by at least $8 million annually. That price was, that dollar was from a few years ago, so with inflation, that's only gotten up. Understanding the community's priorities plays a critical role in the city's budget planning process and how the city prioritizes services. So the Escondido discussion was launched back in 2022. Staff built on the results of a community opinion survey that was conducted in December of 2021, and we've continued to engage citizens citywide to hear local community priorities and city service needs. So these are the priorities that the community identified at that time and continue to, as we continue to engage. So it's addressing homelessness, attracting businesses and jobs to the city, maintaining and repairing local streets, roads, and sidewalks, and keeping public areas clean and free of graffiti. So the structural budget deficit has made it increasingly challenging to address the community's priorities and address city services. As I mentioned, on June 7th, we held a budget workshop that was held with the city council and presented several different scenarios to begin the conversation on how we address the structural budget deficit. So I'm not going to run through each scenario this evening. The link to that city council meeting is online. It was a long presentation. So the three scenarios we presented included a proportional across-the-board budget reduction, where each one of the department, of the departments I listed previously, police, fire, development services, community services, all had an equal percentage cut based on their total share of the general fund. We then did a scenario that presented a methodology where we did it across the board but preserved public safety, as it is considered a, you know, community, the community has communicated that it is an essential service and highest priority. And then scenario number three was a targeted business model approach, where we kind of evaluated each service within the general fund and what could be taken out, no longer provided, and result in the budget savings that we were looking to target to close that general fund budget deficit. So after that discussion in June, the city council held a visioning and structural deficit strategy workshop in September. At that workshop, the council elected to consider the targeted business model approach to address the structural budget deficit and define the essential services that the city provides as well as city priorities for the next three years. So the column on the left are these essential services that the city council has approved and adopted, and this is kind of the lens and the conversation that we'll be bringing forward with this upcoming budget cycle. So it's similar, police and fire services, keeping the city clean for public health and safety, land use development, clean water sewer, public works, infrastructure, and the maintenance of our parks, facilities, and open spaces. The council priorities is to eliminate the structural deficit, improve public safety, increase retention and attraction of people and businesses to Escondido, and encourage housing development. So to address the structural budget deficit in areas that are not defined as essential services, the task is to explore options that eliminate or significantly curtail the financial impact to the general fund. So this table on the left is, again, those departments that make up the general fund expenses. And if you'll recall from earlier, public safety makes up 75% of the general fund. So police, fire, and keeping the city clean for public safety and health has been identified as an essential service in addition to land use, development, public works, and the maintenance in parks and open spaces. So that leaves the remaining programs to evaluate further. So that's the general government administrative services, community services and communications, and then the California Center for the Arts. So I'll go through, and these were numbers that presented, that were presented during last year's budget cycle. So as we look at each one of those categories and the programs and services that they provide to the city, the first was to eliminate the recreation program citywide. This would result in a net budget reduction of a little over $2 million, and on this list is the facilities and positions that would close. The senior nutrition and older adult services program was also on that list. That would result in a net budget reduction of a little over $1 million. The library was also on that list. Based on 2024 numbers, this would result in budget savings of about $2.9 million. I did want to point out that in January, on January 31st, city council did approve funding for the upcoming library services contract for fiscal year 2025 from the American Rescue Plan Act. So I know the city attorney and LSNES will be working on an alternative management agreement to provide the same services, but that action will take the library costs out of the general fund budget, and I think for the next two budget cycles, if I remember correctly, utilize those American Rescue Plan Act to continue to provide services, and then at that time will reevaluate general fund and where we're at. And then this is just the list of the general administrative services. In order to continue to close that budget gap, really all administrative services can do is cut positions, just lower turnaround times, and smaller city, there's less administrative staff that is needed to support those services. So next on the list was the California Center for the Arts. To reduce the budget is to close the CCAE facility. That results in savings of about $2.4 million. Center for the Arts, city council also approved funding, that management agreement for the upcoming budget cycle out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, so fiscal year 2025 will come from that funding source. So with all those actions, which there were a lot of actions, that results in about $9.7 million of general fund savings, which just barely closes the general fund budget gap as it's projected today at about $10 million. Also, at the city council workshop in September, city council gave direction to staff to work on internally some other options for pursuing new revenue. So there's some research being done on what a cannabis program will look like for the city. A short-term rental program is in progress. I believe that will be brought to city council sometime this spring. And then a parcel tax specifically for library services, we were also asked to look into further.
Well, what is, what constitutes a short-term rental? Is that like?
That would be like your Airbnbs. Yeah. So we currently do not assess that 10% transient occupancy tax fee on there. So this will establish a program, the rules, and then within that, we'll be able to collect that TOT. That one does not require voter approval because we already have that transient occupancy tax in place, so it'll stay at 10%. A cannabis program or a parcel tax for library services would require a ballot measure.
For the parcel tax? Is that county running the library, or is that outsourced?
That would be, could be either. So the city itself could do its own ballot measure to assess a parcel tax each year, specifically for library services. I know that's how the county also funds their libraries, so it would be some, it'd be some dialogue with the county on how that structure would look. But yeah, it could be either.
Thank you.
And so closing the presentation, within the projected deficits, I mentioned deferred maintenance earlier. There's a lot of items across the city that are not included in our budget that we know exist today that are not accounted for in any of those charts. So when I talked about deferred maintenance, that includes all the city facilities, parks, playgrounds, storm drains, sidewalk bridges, all the city's infrastructure. So there's a lot of deferred maintenance that goes on that we kind of push aside for future years. The city's also experienced a lot of rising service demands. Our population over the last 10 years has grown. Certainly, the impact of homelessness and graffiti eradication and gang response and aging population has put a much greater need on some of the services that the city provides, and all of that has kind of added to response times that the city is able to do for permits and various quality of life concerns. In addition, there's a utility fund allocation that we have to address in this upcoming budget cycle, so more information, all that will come out through budget workshops that we'll have with city council, starting in the next couple of months. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
For the parcel tax, do we currently know, you know, what the county charges, and that would be included in a property tax assessment, or?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm not familiar with a county, like, specific assessment and how that works. If voters approved a parcel tax within Escondido, the ballot language would set limits and how the funding would work year over year. So I think typically, we would set a dollar amount based on, there's a lot of different ways you can do it, single-family residential versus a square footage. It would be capped, could increase, you know, beyond a certain percentage each year. The intent of the parcel tax would be to fund some sort of library services, so it would be considered a special tax, would require 2/3 voter approval. Special tax because it's restricted to a specific thing compared to a library, a specific service, compared to like a general sales tax measure or some other tax that's just going towards general city services. Currently, that's just a 50-plus-one, simple majority.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
For the new revenue sources, do you see those having targets or deadlines for when those solutions need to be pushed forth?
I think there are options that city are looking into. A community survey is currently being drafted. The city's engaged with a consultant to test some of those revenue options and whether city of Escondido voters would be amenable to those options. So that's kind of one of the steps in the process. Anything that goes on the November ballot would have specific deadlines, so as I said, there's no, like, deadline that council's given us, other than kind of trying to meet those different deadlines for how we would want to pursue and approve the tax.
So ideally, sometime in the next year?
If we wanted revenue, yeah, to go into, otherwise, you'd have to wait until the next ballot opportunity, and there's a lot of different options for that.
Just one more question. So the library's being taken out of the general fund. Is it a hard process to get the library back into the general fund? How does that look as part of a conversation, you know, one or two years from now?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it will be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act for the next two upcoming budget cycles, but I think it's something we always want to keep an eye on, and library services will continue to be a conversation as part of the budget. So this is going to be one of the, the slide that all the, all the actions that staff took to close the deficit, this is going to be one of those. This is an opportunity for a one-time funding source to continue services, so we're going to track that and yes, constantly remind that if you want library services to continue in fiscal year 2027, let's constantly, let's continue the dialogue of discussing what that plan looks like under either scenario.
Got it. Thank you.
So just a clarification. My understanding is if we choose to go to a, become a, another branch of the county library system, my understanding that if Escondido did that in future years, that we would have another property tax assessment added to what we now pay to cover that. Because I've heard people say, oh, if we go into the county system, it's already paid for, it's in our property taxes. I don't think that's true.
Yeah, I'm not, I haven't been a participant in any conversations with the county, so definitely not a subject matter expert, but I certainly think part of the dialogue with the county library would be how are we going to fund the library?
Right.
Thank you for that presentation. I did see that there was a note regarding with the closing the Center for the Arts, that there is added expenses, or there is going to be expense associated with a vacant lot. Would that be the case with the library? I didn't see a figure on that.
Oh, um, yes. Because the Center for the Arts facility is so close, and we have a lot of overlapping operations behind the scenes as far as ventilation systems and all sorts of things, there's a little bit more cost associated with a vacant building, but you are very much correct that any vacant building within the city can't just be left vacant. There's some sort of, of cost to either making sure that building is safe and not damaged, or yes, there would be some, some sort of cost associated with that, just a little less than what we would, the impact from the Center for the Arts.
Got it. Thank you. And then so what, what does the city plan to use these vacant lots for? I imagine they don't just want them sitting there.
Yeah.
What other, would that be open for other entities to come in and rent the space out to generate more income?
Yeah. Part of some of the conversations we had is specifically with a lot of our recreation facilities, senior nutrition, you know, the senior center, those. If the direction was to move forward and remove those programs from the general fund, then we would certainly pursue what our other options would be. That might be in the form of a management agreement from some other entity to run those programs. Right? We would kind of look at those options for different models, so those are all ideas and thoughts and options to kind of weigh as, as we look at these different budget cut mechanisms. So no decisions, but I think, yes, that would definitely be a topic of conversation of then what clearly are the next steps if we do take out those programs.
I have another question.
Yeah.
And thank you again for your time in answering our questions here. So I recently saw in the news that the city is thinking about maybe a city-run homeless shelter. How would you be able to categorize that in the general fund based on the presentation you gave today? Like, where would that be allotted?
That would have to be a conversation and dialogue with the city council.
Got it.
On how they would direct the funding for how we would operate that facility.
Yeah, I didn't know if it fit into an existing category that's already presented here or not.
We do not have an existing category. We do get some grant funding that does support a little bit of those services, community development block grants. So we do have a little bit of that, those federal funds, but certainly not to the degree of, yeah, renting a shelter.
Okay. Thank you.
Just curious if it's come up in conversation to put the sales tax measure back on the ballot. I know it didn't pass last time, but it seems like this issue is bigger than just the library and other services in the city of Escondido.
At the city council workshop that they held in September, they gave clear direction to staff that they would not be recommending a sales tax measure from them in this upcoming ballot. So they directed staff not to pursue that.
Okay. And I don't know if you're familiar, or Reno might know the answer to this, with the $10 million infrastructure grant that we're receiving, is there any kind of indication on the grant that the library has to be in working order for? on the grant that the library has to be in working order for a certain amount of time if this grant is given?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question.
Yes.
Yes, right, okay, yeah. Nothing more than the details of that one, yeah.
You know that timeline, Reno?
I believe it's 10 years from the reception of the grant.
Okay.
But I don't remember the specifics.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you again for having me.
Okay, just trying to find, okay, item number three, outreach subcommittee report. I don't know if that's Mirabelle or Frances.
Did you request this on the agenda?
Oh.
Maybe we did last, last, last week.
Yeah, last month.
Last month. So I can share a little bit. So Frances and I met just to kind of start getting on the same page regarding really our, the social media for the library. And so we did come away with it a couple of questions, but really we were trying to hone in on who the target audience is, because different platforms will lend themselves to different audiences and really what some of that messaging is, right? So is the messaging just, these are the services we provide, just, you know, FYI? Is it to try to draw people in? And is it to inform the public? I think one of the things that we, we talked about that we would really like to see is the library being its own platform to inform the community and being very careful because we, in our roles and the library, what it serves in the community, it's never really to advocate for any one side, but I think at the very least, getting the library on a schedule where they're reporter, sharing out local news surrounding libraries, right? Whether it's a, hey, did you know that in next week's city council meeting, you know, the library budget's going to be talked about, right? We're not going to be saying that it's good, it's bad, but at least the public is out there, right? And it's really to envision, you know, if the library shuts down two, three years from now, that the public would have been aware of it, so it doesn't become an issue during the private, like, it did during the privatization where it's like, we didn't know about this, why are they closing it, where we really try to keep all the news open. You know, whether some county news comes up and how they, that may affect policies. I think just kind of sharing some, some segments of what's going on around the library. And I know Reno, when we talked, that there wasn't a dedicated person for the library, so it's really identifying, was it a volunteer assignment that they took on when the person whose role it was left? Or is it part of their duties but not a priority? Is it one single person? Could it be distributed amongst a variety of different people? And our goal through the subcommittee really is going to be to kind of create, create a plan of recommendations so that, you know, the city staff or the library staff aren't finding themselves having to spend all that extra time to kind of do the brainstorming. And so it's really thinking of, you know, we'll do one of in the news, library share out, you know, once a month, maybe, once every two weeks, so we kind of have a timeline. And as those occur, it would just be up to the library staff to, you know, find what's going on at that time of when it's posting. I think one of the other key goals is really to kind of put the board out there a little bit more. So I don't think a lot of patrons know that there is a library board, what we do, and so I also kind of wanted to gauge the board, how open you all would be to being put somewhere into that social media calendar for a share out. And we can rotate, right? And it could be as personal or as you'd like, right? So it could be, you know, you know, March, my, March will be my month and my share out will be, you know, I did, this is the book I read with my book club and, you know, this is why I recommend it or I don't recommend it. And, you know, maybe next month Frances, you know, takes a photo of the library when he's at his, at an event with his, with his kiddos. So that way that they are also recognizing that there is a board and that we are active in the library as well. So I think those are just some of the things that we shared out. I think we're still honing in on some more of those recommendations, and I'll be reaching out to Reno to get a little bit more information on the social, the photo and media policy, just so that we know a little bit more of what we can and can't do. Anything else you think I'm missing, Frances?
That was an excellent recap. I'm a fly too, I might add. Mirabelle addressed pretty much everything. We did have a few questions kind of lingering in regards to like, who is running social media, how much is it volunteering versus not, but yeah, she just touched on all of that really well, so.
And so Frances and I will keep meeting, remember, we're still going to do a little bit more research on our end, and then I think once we have some recommendations drafted, we'll bring it to the board for your thoughts, and then we can give that, those over to Reno.
Thanks, you guys. Good suggestions. I love the ideas. Reno, does that work well with supporting your needs?
Yeah, we're, I'm still in the process of really getting a handle on how we want to overhaul our social media and marketing approaches, so suggestions and recommendations are very welcome, especially hearing from what you hear in the community as far as like where people are hearing about library services, whether they're interacting with our social media and which ones. I know for sure that a lot of people learn about events through our newsletters, our e-newsletters, so if that's the case, maybe we focus more effort on those versus some of the other avenues we've been using for marketing. I know I've started suggesting reducing the amount of print materials, seeing how most of the surveys in the past have shown that people are more informed by the e-newsletter and our online calendar or even our print calendar than they are by flyers or print materials for individual events, and that's a cost, even though it's covered by the city, it's, if it's not working, I don't want our staff spending time designing and creating print materials that nobody's going to use and is just going to get recycled. So hearing from you and hearing from the community as to what is actually where they turn for library-related information or even just community events in general will be helpful.
Great, thanks, you guys. Good work. Okay, we'll move on to annual officer election.
Can I move to defer this to after, after the, I guess it's the next appoint, after the appointment?
Yeah, yeah. I thought we did it in April last year for some reason.
Yeah, we do it all, every, every time after the new folks come on or, you know, after the council makes their decision. So we'll move.
Council should have made their decision by now and they haven't, so.
Yeah, did, did you interview already?
I did, last week.
Last week, okay. Do, do you think you're going to?
No, they said they'll announce it.
And I think that they will not, and they still have the planning commission ones and it, so it would be the next, let me just look at my calendar, but Zach just told me this today that I believe it's going to be at the April, and I want to just make sure I'm looking at the right April meeting. I don't know if the mayor's going to do April 3rd or the 10th.
Okay, so why don't we defer to, I'll motion to defer to May, our May meeting to make the election?
You can have staff pull it too. I mean, either way, do you want to push it to the May?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, what if we have, if everything's solidified by the April meeting, why not do it then?
Yeah, we could do that.
We could put it on the May meeting and if they haven't announced it yet, then we'll push it. I mean, we could do it at the April meeting and if they haven't announced it yet, we'll push it to May.
So the April meeting is what, the 11th?
11th.
Yeah, the 11th at 6:00. So if they do the 3rd, then we would have the opportunity, but then if they do the 13th?
But your agenda will already have been posted.
Oh.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, because we could still defer it.
You can still do it, and then if you did, if they didn't for some reason, you could push it to the May.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, if you would like, so if you want to motion and vote it to push it to May, or I'm sorry, to April?
Okay. Well, we'll motion to move the annual officer election to our April meeting.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I'm just going to open the voting. Move to April. Perfect. Okay. And so that's approved 5-0, so we'll move it to the April meeting.
Great. We'll move on to the library director's report.
All right. So we're going to do, start with our statistics. January, yes, we're looking at January's report first. Overall, no surprises. Everything continues on trend. Physical checkouts continue to match expectations and steadily increasing, same with our e-materials. In particular, e-materials, I'm keeping a close eye on as we're evaluating budgets, and we'll talk about more about that in my director's report. But essentially, everything seems to be about steady increases. Everything from LinkPlus ILLs to the number of borrowers continues a steady increase. We've been adding around 300 new, between 300 and 500 new library cards per month. Library visits, again, continue pretty steadily increasing, surpassing around 20,000 visits per month. Wi-Fi continues to increase and answering questions, before I believe we had a question about whether the Wi-Fi is extending into the parking lot, and I finally received an answer. The answer is yes and no. Only, there is no official access point that serves the parking lot. All that happens is that the two that are closest to on the first floor, it extends to like the first layer of parking spaces, but not beyond that. If we wanted to increase that, we can ask the city's IT team to see how much that would cost. It might be covered by the funds we receive to support our infrastructure for IT, but that would require a new access point that covers that parking lot fully. And I know that part of the infrastructure may touch the parking lot, so that could be a chance to upgrade, but currently it's really just a little bit of overflow from the access points that are on that first floor. So it doesn't go all the way, but some of the spots do get Wi-Fi. Beyond that, looking at the stats, programs and in-person, everything is about the same. Any questions about the stats for the month of January or any trends?
Yeah, do you know why the number of website visits went up so much?
See, number of website? I don't. From what I could tell, what I would suspect is that part of that might have been related to our winter reading challenge, so we had decent turnout for that, almost as good as our summer, not quite as much because it's shorter. That could be a reason why it increased compared to, say, December, because the program ran January through February. That's a very likely chance, and also could coincide with the rise in e-materials. So as more people hear about or learn about libraries having e-books, audiobooks, et cetera, we could anticipate seeing more people visiting the website to figure out what we have available. That would be my two off-the-top-of-my-head thoughts, without digging into the Google Analytics data to see exactly where people are going as compared to prior months.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. As far as the strategic plan goes, so this month, we were just reviewing the goals related to supporting the economic development, the economic services for the city. I'll run through most of these just very quickly, and I kind of focused on what we're doing this year on each of the statuses. We are working right now to create another, our annual job fair and related resume building workshops and related workshops. Our adult services department is working on that, so that will be happening again. For enhancing technology and training, so this would be safety training, we're targeting finding partners in the community. We have several organizations in San Diego County that offer these types of online trainings or trainings for how to be safe online, specifically for children and teens and what to be aware of. Whereas the adult classes are related to technology, we're training our new librarian for adult services on how to present those types of classes for adults in the community, so this would be more like beginner Microsoft Word or Excel or say just using online, like Google searches, et cetera. So the basics in library, or I should say, technology use for library patrons is kind of our goal for adult services. But like I said, we have a new librarian fresh out of grad school and we're working with her to kind of train and get her ready to do those presentations. The main block here, modifying the current facility, I'll talk more about as we learn more about the renovation infrastructure grant. Study rooms are still a high priority, so every time I get asked what we want from the grant, I remind them that we want study rooms and meeting rooms. Same with the idea of adding a space for a coffee bar or snack space. Plans that I keep suggesting include having some space where there's not carpet, so that way we can encourage food and drink and not worry about spills on the carpet. Same with like a makerspace or a library of things. We are going to have to figure out where in the library to place such a space. The current look at the infrastructure grant doesn't give us much room for constructing new spaces. Most of it is not going to be able to do that, so looking for ways of either repurposing existing spaces, possibly on the second floor, as the first floor is running out of things we can do to change what's there. The second floor has a few more rooms where we could modify them potentially for makerspace or something similar. And then, of course, our elementary school STEAM offerings keep growing, so we have a very strong partnership with Cal State San Marcos and their educational program for teachers, and also just they have a focus on integrating STEAM into curriculums, so they have a number of weekly classes that we provide to our children's department. And again, we're looking for more and more programs. We are starting a tinkering program aimed more for tweens in addition to targeting grant opportunities for teen programs and tween programs, so really enhancing that children's area for not just youngest learners, but also for all age groups, so going up to through the tweens and then eventually enhancing a teen area, so that way teens have something, so that we have the full spectrum from birth through retirement and old age. Everybody would have something or a space for them in the library. And that kind of coincides with this other one, create more welcoming spaces and providing off-site services. So off-site services are tricky, but those most likely we've investigated and have worked with other libraries where we've had like 24-hour library kiosks where you can check in and return materials there. That's one option that's less expensive than setting up a library branch or something similar. It still requires some maintenance from staff because we have to go check on it, and also depending on what type of kiosk, some require staff to actually check in the books and then put them back into the machine, whereas some other ones, you can have the machine both check in and return books, but sometimes if it gets full, then people have to go in Other things that aren't necessarily part of the goals but affect the Escondido economy support, I've been working quite a bit with the new director of Development Services and Economic Development to figure out how we can plug in the library to help the city's plans as far as downtown development. So I'm pushing staff to really rebrand and make people more aware of the re-local shop-local program we have that gives discounts to downtown businesses, encouraging businesses to understand why it's good for them that people use that program and encourage that use. I'm now part of the Downtown Arts Magic group, so that's a group that supports local arts, music, theater, so the library's engaged with them, so that way we know how and what they're planning and how we can help them. So I attended my first meeting for that recently, and so I'm excited to work more with our arts and music community. As you all know, we have our second Saturday concerts, which they also support, so getting more variety and a greater diversity of acts at the library, but also having the library be out in the arts community more frequently is one of my goals as well for helping the Escondido economy, especially downtown. Do we have any questions about the strategic plan?
Colin, I'm really pleased that you are working with magic. I think that's a great combination.
No? Okay. No questions? No? Okay. No questions? We'll move on to my director's report, and I'm sure you'll have some questions as we go through. Let me get my notes too. All right, so starting off, quick updates on the library renovation grant and project. So we are meeting every two weeks. I meet with the city representatives and the various consultants that are working on this project. In our most recent meeting, we started going through some potential budgets as far as what expenditures and costs are associated with different critical infrastructure needs. We haven't finalized budgets yet, so I don't want to, I didn't have anything really to share because nothing is fixed yet. But just to give you an update, so you have an idea of some major expenses. As we all expected, HVAC will be a pretty big expense replacing old units and replacing ductwork, et cetera. Other significant tasks that we weren't necessarily expecting originally. There seems to be a substantial need to bring the building's seismic needs up to code. So there's going to be a need for seismic retrofitting for a lot of the building. Especially for me, that was not expected, it's the library stacks or the shelves, particularly on that first floor that are especially high. They're a little too tall now, and they're not necessarily up to code for that height. So it's very likely either that we will have to modify the existing shelves, either by cutting them and kind of shifting everything down, or by replacing all of the shelves with new shelving. So right now, the contractor, IDS, is looking into what is more cost-effective. But it's very likely that due to the seismic needs and also the ADA compliance of the shelves currently as they are, they're not complying with ADA standards. So a lot of that has to do with how much space is between the rows of the shelves and the width of each shelf walking space. So to accommodate both the seismic and the ADA, it's very likely we'll have to replace most of the shelving, which then has a cascading effect that the current shelving is where all the light for that space is coming from. So all the lighting is actually on top of the shelving and it reflects up off the ceiling. So there's no actual lighting in the ceiling. It's all based on the shelves. Yeah, it's surprising if you've never looked up, you won't actually see any light fixtures there. They're all on the shelves and they're built into the shelves. So if we have to replace all the shelves, we will have to install lighting or find lighting that can be attached to shelving to then make use of the reflective panels that are above. So again, a bit of a surprise, we weren't expecting that. But so far, it looks like there will be funds for it within the grant. Right now, we're in the stage of figuring out what the costs are going to be. So then the city with our input gets a list of what the priorities are for the renovation. But those are some of the main areas that I thought you would want to know about HVAC.
That's really interesting because originally, I think we were under the impression that we couldn't get it, use any of the grant money on shelving per se. But now due to seismic and ADA, we get to do one of the things we wanted to do in the first place.
Correct. And that really has to do with the fact that the shelving has to be anchored and substantially not movable. And so because of that, it's very like, and also the fact that it includes our lighting, that ties more into if we get rid of shelving or we modify it, then it forces our hand on what we can and can't do.
The California Reno.
Yep. Any other questions about the renovation project before we move on?
Just like what do you see as the next step here?
Our next steps right now is we're trying to finalize, well, IDS is doing, needs to do a little bit more research to see the extent of the needs for certain areas. So right now, they're really trying to figure out where and why there is a lot of leaks during rain in the building. Depending on what the cause is, it might require more work than other causes. So they're going to be sending teams just to double check. They're trying to see if the city can help with doing some like testing by using like a power washer to simulate the rain to see where the seams are and where the water is coming in. So that way they can better trace it and then have a better idea of what needs to be repaired and how much that would cost. Beyond that, it's deciding with the city of how much of the seismic retrofitting, because there's different levels of retrofitting that can be done, like a bare minimum versus like industry best practices and like above and beyond. So depending on where we land, that'll affect what needs to be done in the building. But mostly right now, we're in the process of figuring out estimates for the repairs and retrofitting, et cetera. And then once we have a realistic budget for each of the different categories, HVAC, roof, ADA, bathrooms, parking lot adjustments, so like path of entry. Once that's all set, then the next step is prioritizing and deciding what can't be done in order to stay within the budget. And at that point, I think I'll be able to share with you the budgets that are decided as far as like, these are the options, so that way we can get some of your input as well.
Are there any other approvals that need to happen at like a city council level? Or like, once you have all the stuff you just mentioned, is it ready to go?
I believe most of it is ready to go. I do think that there might be some need for the city council to approve the RFP for the actual construction company once IDS creates the plans and the budgets and all that. But I'm not 100% sure on that, but I'm pretty sure that has to go through approval. Because it'll be a substantial amount, even though it's grant-funded. Because that's going to be like the, around 7.5 million will be for those construction costs.
All right, thank you.
All right, so grants, some good news. We applied for California State Grant. There's a number each season. And they don't give us much time to review and apply for them. They give us about a month, which is why you didn't hear about it last month. It happened between when we last met and this meeting. So I did want to let you know, we did apply for 20,000 in grant funds with a matching amount of around 25,000 from the city. And that's using one of those trusts that were originally already approved. And we don't have to worry about it. It's already approved for youth services area enhancements. So the main goal with this one is to, one, revitalize the children's area, especially the toddler play area, because that's what we're seeing right now as our most popular programs. It's programs for ages zero to round seven. We keep getting around 100 people per storytime in some of them. And some of the less busy storytimes, we're getting like 30 to 50. So as we have so many, we do want to encourage a space for both those age groups to have fun and play, but also more furniture for the adults and the older kids to also be able to sit down and not have to sit on tiny, tiny furniture, which is fine. But you know, updating that space, again, the space has had some updates, but the majority of the layout has been about the same since the library opened in the 1980s. So kind of providing more, one, play structures, but also a little bit of tech. I'm really excited to bring in tablets with non- augmented reality app, even if it's really basic. So that way, those that come in can use it to kind of walk around, explore the murals and get videos or information about the animals, about Africa, the safari, all that. And expose more and more of our community to a technology that isn't widely available, but it's something that I've seen and done in libraries. That's a nice way of tying together tech and the mural and the space. And I did attach the entire packet that we sent to the state of California for review. There was actually a lot more questions, but I only limited to the ones that were relevant. If you have any questions about the grant, let me know. I'm happy to answer them.
You have a question. Does, do you get support from Alice and S to apply for these grants?
It depends on the grant. This one was short-term. We do have the option of contacting in particular our marketing team. They're very good about reviewing it. In this case, because we were kind of short, short on time, most of it was done by myself and our assistant library director, Dan Wood. So I would say most of this was just me writing it.
Wow.
And part of it was so that way I could get used to the California State Grant process and be more aware about how much time it takes. Now I have a better picture, so that way when we do next year's grants, we're better prepared. There's a number that we're keeping an eye out for next year, including grants for sustainability programs, such as including like adding a seed library or the fix-it clinics, all that stuff. So staff are working on a grant package related to that. So that way we're ready for next year's budget cycle or to find alternative sources in the community for parts of these types of grants. So that way we have packages ready to go.
Yeah. Well, great job. You know, I know like filling out the grant application is on top of your normal day-to-day duties. So excellent job. I know it's very time-consuming. And I just read through a little bit of what you provided and very impressive. So thank you for all the work that you're doing to secure these grants for Escondido.
Yeah, just to say, I think this, this write-up and the detail you put in it that supports it, that all interlinks. And I can't, sometimes people write up one thing and then they put something else in the statistics. And this thing just flows amazingly well. Really, really well done.
I'm not going with what's already been said, but well done by you and Dan. It is really a good read and hopefully it comes into fruition.
And I will mention that if we don't get the grant, we have backup plans for what we can do. Like I said, the matching amount, I think our goal is still to refresh that space. We might just, depending on when the construction happens, might align it better with the renovation rather than with the grant cycle. But that's still a high priority is renovating and expanding. We don't want to just refresh the first floor with that renovation. We do want to find funds to refresh the second floor. Because again, our children's materials are our most popular circulating materials. So I do want to have a space that's up to date and encourages more and more use. Speaking of new things, library website. Probably in the coming weeks, I'll be able to send all of you a preview. I believe the city is going to let me know when everything is ready for start sharing. I do believe they want to preview it first to like council members and other key stakeholders in the city before we open it up. The plan right now is for the website to debut towards the end of April. It was supposed to be the beginning, but now it's, I think some departments needed some more time. We also are benefiting from having a little bit more time to update and edit the website. But myself and staff are going through and updating it. A lot of that has to do with removing redundant information, guiding more people towards the library calendar online, and just overall doing a facelift for what's there. So not only just making it easier to navigate, but making sure we comply with ADA and like screen reader recommendations. So that way more and more people can access it on multiple devices. So I should have more news about that coming soon.
I think I asked this question the last couple of months too, but the 2023 end-of-year recap, you shared that with us. But any, any updates on when that's going to be pushed relating to the website?
On the website, the new website. And there's a section on the new website that highlights news and special events. So we'll dedicate a button and space to that. Very likely, because we're kind of falling behind, I might just post it onto the website as is. You will, we're also getting printed versions of it. So each of you will get a printed version. And I'm also getting them to send to stakeholders so they remember and recognize how much work we do at the library. Because we know a lot of people don't visit the strategic plan or the annual report on the website. So we will have some for outreach events and also for anybody in the city that wants the annual report as a printed version, we'll have that as well.
Nice. Yeah, thank you for that update. And the reason I keep asking is because I want to get it out there as much as possible to show how impactful the library is. As we saw at the beginning of this meeting, we need to get that word out as much as possible.
I have a question on the website. And I'm sorry if you answered this before. With this new website, do you still maintain control of updating the library portion?
Excellent question, yes. So based on the new website, myself and Dan are going to be what we, what the city calls site owners. So we have the capability of updating and creating new pages within the website. And we can still edit all the content. So our staff won't be able to create new pages, but they will be able to edit existing pages to help kind of provide a little bit of control as far as what gets updated and when. Because Dan and I will still approve, once there's an edit, then we just approve it or change it or deny it. There will be, one of the goals with the new website is to make it a little bit more consistent as far as all the departments looking similar. So we'll be a little bit less, you'll see a lot more similarities between say like the library pages and other departments like police, fire, et cetera. But overall, we'll still have the ability to maintain control over what the content is and can edit it without needing to ask like, say, city IT or city communications. If there's no more questions about the website, I'll just give you a brief update on collection budget plans. So the collection budget mirrors the library's and city's fiscal year budget. So we have to try to spend everything by the end of June, which really means we have to start spending everything, everything should have arrived by June, is what we try to do. So right now, we have a few, a few more months. So we're in the process of reevaluating budgets for next fiscal and starting to plan ahead. So some of the highlights, I just wanted to mention to you, so you're aware of some changes. We are reducing a number of database budgets, so databases are, are online resources. Most of the ones we're likely to cut are from EBSCO. These include a number of databases that are more related to reference or academic sources. In total, those, most of those will have less than 10 people use it per year. But in total, the EBSCO databases as a package cost the library around $12,000, which is not to me acceptable. And so we are going to be cutting those. The majority of those funds, I'll say, will go towards funding our new lease, book lease program with Baker &amp; Taylor. I'm targeting it at almost exactly 12,000. So it's almost, instead of, you know, less than 50 people using a resource for $12,000, we'll have a lot more people using the print resources from the lease program. The lease gives you around, it's for every, I think it's, I'm trying to remember, 3,000. It's like around, it's a 10 to 1 ratio. So for 12,000, we should have at least 1,200 new books that we can cycle through as a package. A little bit more depending on the final contract. But that'll give us the ability to order multiple copies. And once those become less popular, we can return them. We can depend, if we see high holds, we can request more materials for that particular title. And then once the holds stabilize or decrease, we can return the extra items and get more. So the lease will give us a lot more flexibility to, one, have a lot more materials are in demand, but also new materials we can test out, you know, even in nonfiction. Most of it will go towards fiction, but some nonfiction can also be ordered through the lease. And that could be items that are, you know, extra copies of computer books that are more likely to change year to year, software, topical items, et cetera. Other changes, we are looking to cut back on our print periodicals. So that's a lot of the magazines and newspapers. Again, we just don't see enough people using those. And also a lot of those magazines are going out of business. So we see a lot more use in print items, like the books, nonfiction, children's, and also more and more in our ebooks. So we are trying to divert those less-used collection funds towards items that are actually in demand. And overall, my goal with some of these collection allocations include increasing funding to children's materials. Again, children's items are our most popular collections overall. And because of that, there's a need to replace a lot of those collection items, just from wear and tear and use. And so adding more funds to that. Another collection that I really want to enhance is our nonfiction for adults. A lot of it was targeted a few years ago during the weeding process just because it was very old and out of date and also in poor condition in some cases. But that's left a lot of that space needing more nonfiction to fill in gaps in the collection with the relevant items. So we're targeting, putting more funding for that next year or the year after. And also Spanish. Our Spanish collections have been neglected as far as I can tell from the prior year budgets. So I'm more or less doubling the amount of money we're spending on Spanish for both adults especially and a little bit more for children. Children's budgets in Spanish were a little bit better, but the adult budgets were not nearly enough to actually have enough new materials to make the collections relevant to the community in my opinion. And so we'll be adding more funds to that. Any questions about the collection budget or plans or any suggestions?
I just appreciate you giving a little bit more love to that Spanish collection because it is pretty, pretty small.
Yep.
I'm just going to say the way you're approaching the budget, the collection budget and, and doing a more in-depth dive into what's being used and what's not, this is, this is really good. This is, this is what should have been happening all along and I'm really glad to see it.
All right. Question? Yep.
I was going to ask something, so I was holding off. Can, so I see a possible cuts impact Hoopla. And I still don't under, I think I've asked this before, but I don't remember. What is the difference between Hoopla and Libby?
Okay. Excellent question. So the main difference is in the model for library purchases of those e-materials. Hoopla works on a per, pay-per-borrow model. So every time somebody checks out an item from Hoopla, we pay for it. The amount varies. It can be as low as like a dollar or so, up to like $7, with the more expensive items usually being the audiobooks, especially the full versions because there are bridge ones that cost about half. So that's pay-per-use. We set a monthly budget estimating based on use. Currently, it's around $5,000 a month for Hoopla, which honestly is beyond our budgeted amount. We budget for Hoopla around 20,000 a year. And so if it's going at 5,000 a month recently, you can already imagine it'll exceed it. So what happens then? It means that one, we are going to have to institute caps on how much is spent each month for Hoopla. And also another tool we have is to limit the amount of checkouts per person per month. Currently, it's set at five, but that's likely going to have to be reduced, if not to four, maybe three, to see what we can do. Overdrive by, or Libby by Overdrive is a little bit different. That one, we partially get funds from our cooperative, SARA. We pull together so we can buy more materials through Overdrive collectively. And Overdrive has a number of different models. So depending on what the publishers want, some of the books are, the best ones are, you buy it once and it's ours to keep. Those are very rare, but those are there. A lot of the books are paid for at say, let's say, for one book, it might be $60 for the audiobook, for example. That one might be dependent on the, the license. It could be, we keep the book for X amount of checkout. So let's say 20 checkouts. And then once those 20 checkouts are done, we have to pay again if we want to get that same title. Some of them might be where it's for a number of, for amount of time. So we buy a title, the license lasts for a year. After that year, we have to renew that title if we want to continue. So there's a number of different approaches within Overdrive. And usually what happens is the more popular items are the ones that have limited checkouts or a limited time, whereas more of like the classics tend to be the ones we can buy for a lifetime. It tend to be more expensive upfront, but at least we then own them as part of the Overdrive collection, as long as we continue paying that platform fee to Overdrive, which again, right now is being supported through SARA. So part of our contributions to the cooperative and the grant funds that the cooperative gets helps support Overdrive and Libby. My recommendation, if we ever had to cut, I don't like the idea of necessarily cutting Hoopla entirely. Overdrive and Libby, well, Libby has more users, about double what Hoopla does, but costs about the same to maintain as Hoopla. The reason I'm hesitant to remove Hoopla entirely is because Hoopla does offer certain items that aren't available on Overdrive. For example, movies, binge pass, some, some variants and titles available. So I do like having that option for patrons. It just might mean we have to look at reducing or limiting how much people can check out per month to align better with the budget. This is just a reminder, the collection budget is separate from the library's operating funds. It's 250,000. It's been 250,000 since LSNS took over. It does not increase every year. It is a baseline and we're happy to have 250,000, but it does not set to, it's not set to increase the way that our operating contract is. And as you can imagine, just like with everything else, the costs of e-materials have gone up, just like the cost of materials in general. So functionally, we've been receiving less funds to operate and purchase materials each year. And that's something that would be nice if we could get, once we secure funding, as we learned during the presentation earlier, to maintain a collection that aligns with the growth of the city and our services. But overall, it could be worse. We, I have seen other libraries that are similar in size to us that have less collection monies than we do. So we do have right now an amount that gives us enough to buy new materials, but we are going to start seeing the squeeze and having to make those decisions because eventually I will run out of things I can cut and eventually hit things that we don't want necessarily cut as far as the collection is concerned.
That was all very insightful. Thank you. I'm just looking here at the stats and it, my math is probably off, but it seems like less than 20% of the circulation is e-material. That would include Hoopla, Overdrive. I'd be interested to know like how many patrons are essentially making up that number as well, like whatever the percentages of library active users are connected to Hoopla or e-material. But otherwise, your logic makes complete sense with regards to what potentially might have to go or be reduced at least.
We were, it's both fortunate and unfortunate, but the databases that weren't being used were particularly expensive. So it made it very easy for me to identify those for cuts. After that though, like you said, most of those funds will go towards print materials. And it's more right now, we're trying to identify which databases, resources can be afforded to be cut and which ones we have enough use to continue using. And so like Overdrive, I believe it's around 3,000 downloads and Libby is around 1,100. And I can send you all the data specific, because we do track all of it and we can easily get the reports for each database and e-resource. So I can definitely prepare an informational packet for you all. Because I compile those every month anyways, so it's just an extra step to send it off to you. And yeah, so then we just have some highlights from the programs. I'm not going to go over all of them, but I will say, we continue to have good turnout for the concerts. Same with our history tours. So we do now have the archivist position back up and running. So I'm hoping that our archivist will be able to work with our adult services department to really enhance the offerings as far as history-related programs, presentations, lectures, and get more people into that Pioneer Room. They also are working really well with establishing a stronger working relationship with the History Center right over here in Grape Day Park. They have new leadership there and they're really excited to work with us and kind of both use the Pioneer Room during open hours, but also figuring out and understanding where they can come in and use the space when we're not open to the public. So that way, they can help with managing archival collections, et cetera. Beyond that, Pioneer Room continues doing well. We have a nice exhibit going on for the Safari Park. And then youth services, you know, we've had some excellent programs, especially in February. Lunar New Year, we celebrated along with a number of different performances. We had demos, the Lion Dancers came in. For African-American History Month, we had the dancers, the Drum and Dance Ensemble will also be here for Juneteenth. So we're already planning that. Beyond that, programs continue. We had good renewals for all our Be Local, Shop Local. And we continue looking for new and exciting ways of expanding our programs. I'm excited right now, we're trying to contact, was it, some local history societies down in San Diego. We're also trying to again, get the funds and the budgets aligned to figure out how we can do the fix-it clinics, whether that be grant-funded or otherwise. Same with sustainability, we're thinking about that seed library. So we're starting to figure out where we can get the seeds, how much they are, whether we can donate it, et cetera. So we have a number of projects in the works. I will mention, as kind of a follow-up to the finance questions you asked earlier, just because there was a couple of questions about the parcel tax and other things. I have been looking into it myself. Depending on what it is, parcel taxes, if you're interested, have been historically more popular as a way of funding in northern cities, especially around San Francisco. They're the ones that have had the most historical reliance on parcel taxes and similar tax measures for funding their libraries. Less so here in the South. I didn't really find much research as far as here in San Diego or nearby communities that depend on that. Parcel tax, depending on how many, and like was mentioned, depending on how it's implemented, you can either tax, you know, residents and businesses, so everybody pays the same amount, or you can do it based on the square footage. There's different approaches. If it was just based on households, I believe there's like 20,000 or 30,000 somewhere in there. Let's just say there's 30,000 for the sake of math. If there's 30,000, then if we wanted to at least fund most of that budget, it would have to be like a hundred dollar parcel tax. That would be close to 3 million, which would cover most of that expense. I can tell you that most of the parcel taxes I saw ranged quite a bit in what they charged. And again, it depends on the model, but I saw everything from a $20 parcel tax up to a $120 parcel tax, depending on the location and the extent of it requiring that funding. As far as the county library system, a lot of people think it's easier than it is. I can tell you for sure that the current county library budget is 65 million. Of that, about half goes to running the branches. So around 33 million is dedicated to branch operations. So in either case, our 3.7 million budget would be either 10% or 5%. So it would be a 10% of the operations for the branches and a 5% of the total county library budget. So 10% of increase in library operations wouldn't be something that the county would just easily be able to afford. So it would require some work from the county and the city to figure out how that's funded. I'll also mention that the county's source of most of the library funding, or a good portion of it, is from that property tax. And based on the property taxes that the library collects, they collect around 1.5% of the total property taxes received by the county goes to the county library system. So if we were to say that the county agreed to also give 1.5% of the taxes, property taxes from Escondido to fund the Escondido Library Branch, 1.5% of the property taxes that the library collects, what would collect here based on what Escondido's property tax allotment was, based on the math I did, it would really only be around $500,000 in property taxes. And so if you were to consider the fact that our budget is 3.7 million, they would have to find alternative measures for funding. Otherwise, you would have to see a very, very reduced library service, running essentially at bare minimum. And definitely, unless there's alternative sources of funding, it would not run in that building because utilities, running the building, maintaining the building alone costs more than 500,000. So all things to be aware of.
What you just, the picture you just painted means that it is just simply not a viable option.
Not with substantial negotiations between the city and the county. Because we all have to remember as well, the county does face its own budget troubles. And so adding additional services to that would have to be something very critically thought of. And they'd have to get pretty creative in how they're finding funding for that.
I was just going to say, thank you for that additional information. It feels like it's the start of many conversations.
It is the news that the library has only funded the next two years affecting the staff.
The funding for the next two years covers the LSNS agreement?
Yes.
So that does cover all the staff and basic operating?
But is, is there any worry or concern that there's not a long-term from the staff?
We are concerned. We are, of course, optimistic. The concern, of course, is what happens once the money runs out. Thankfully, we at least have a little bit more time than say the, the Art Center, who only has one year. At least with two years, we have a little bit more time. Alternative funding sources, like they said, the parcel tax is one option. There is also the possibility of creating a library district that can kind of work independently to help gather more funding. Some libraries do that as well. Again, it's all really dependent on whether the current, and it wasn't mentioned, but there is a ballot initiative that is being supported by the Citizens Ballot Initiative. And that one is being primarily funded by the police, fire, and Teamster Unions. But that one, that's proposing a 1% or 1 cent sales tax going towards the general fund. That's really where we're telling our stakeholders to focus and support if possible, if they agree with it. Because at the end of the day, at least that will help cover gaps in the city's general budget, which can then help fund the library and other services.
Okay. And also, did you, and did anyone, attend the ULC webinar?
I did.
And what were your thoughts from that? Like, did you get, I mean, some of the things that we talked about relevant to what we're dealing with today? So I was wondering what your take was on what they shared.
My takeaway essentially from the ULC, there's, libraries all over the place are struggling with budgets. The main goal, I think it was a lot more focused on finding ways of getting creative with outreach and really letting people know the values of the library. One useful statistic that I usually tell people is that for every dollar that goes to a public library, they get $5 in return on their investment. So it's a one to five ratio. And that's been consistently the amount that most studies have found. It doesn't include a lot of the intangible benefits of having a library. You know, kids that learn how to read and then end up becoming passionate about it or become comfortable as library users. I think all of us here understand the value of the library, but then expressing it in financial terms is good. It's also something I like to remind people that we as a library are a very small percentage of the city budget as compared to some of the other services. And we do our best to maximize the amount of funding we use to really benefit the benefit of the community as much as we can, whether it's collections or it's programs. We, we do our best to kind of return that investment that is given to the library.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Reno. Great information. Sorry, I'm running over. We're trying to wrap this up now. So library trustees report, I can go first. So I attended the Escondido Historical Walk with Frances's kids. I recognized them there and is it John Archer that leads it? Oh my gosh, that was my first time meeting him. We're so lucky to have him. The wealth of knowledge that he has in the history, I hope we're able to have that retained if he ever decides to retire because yeah, it was great. It was phenomenal.
It was phenomenal. I lived in Escondido for nearly 10 years and I learned so much. And just spending an hour with him, it was super fun. So, I recommend, if you guys haven't done that tour with him yet, it was, it was great. That's what I had. John?
Not much. I'm sure happy we have Link. It's great. It looks like we're loaning as many as we're getting. So, it's, it shows that, that our collection is, you know, the fact that other people are taking, borrowing as many books from our library as we're borrowing from the other 42 is, is a good thing. Yeah?
I'll go next. So, my group and I ended up doing the book club again. So, that was really nice. I do want to shout out the staff because I was one of those patrons that ran in five to 10 minutes before closing because I had to get the book club because I totally spaced out and it was my turn to pick up the bag. But, they were really quick and nice to help me fill out the form and get the book and I was still out within one minute to spare. I do have to shout out the staff for that. CSUSM has opened up. I don't think they've done their public unveiling yet, but they have a maker space now. And so, I was able to check that out. So, they have a 3D machine, a vinyl cutter, embroidery machine, like button maker. So, it was really neat to kind of envision what that could look like. I know with questions about the deficit and funding, I think, at least in my opinion right now, that's kind of a little bit to, to the side. But, it, it's interesting to see what that could look like. So, if any of you are making your way to CSUSM, you can check it out. It's on the lower level of the library. On the website, it says to students, faculty, staff, and CSUSM community. So, I don't know what that entails. I believe the public unveiling will be in April. Yeah. I also attended the San Diego River Conservancy, like Creek to Critters event. And I'm just curious because I did notice that one required registration. So, for any events that do require registration, how do you feel that impacts or maybe does not impact attendance? I think in just my own pers, it seemed like there was less people in attendance than other events where it, it wasn't required.
That's usually the case. Usually, registration is either required by some of the partner organizations. Usually, we use, like registrations if we have limited supplies. A lot of times, we'll still allow walk-ins, I'll be honest. If you walk in, we're usually done to bring people away. But, we might say that, you know, if you don't register, we might not have enough supplies. That's usually the case. Beyond that, yes, it's usually either to make sure we don't have too many people, like especially if it's not in the tarentine room or if it's in one of the smaller rooms, like at the Mathis Center. But, normally, it's either, so that way, our partners, they might impose a limit on how many students or participants, et cetera. Or beyond that, it's mostly supplies.
Okay. I would recommend, I, I know, I think we talked about QR codes and maybe trying to implement those. I think on any like social media post, that could be a way where we start trying to test those out and see how effective those are. It's just, so, the post that I had seen, the URL had a typo. So, I was like, why isn't it downloading? Yeah, yeah. And so, I ended up figuring it out, but I did see other people commenting that the link wasn't working. So, I think QR codes may help with, with some of, some of those issues.
I also had a chance to attend the virtual one-hour Urban Library Council Town Hall on the critical role of libraries. It was a really informative hour to hear from experts across the country in regards to library status and communities and the concerns and everything else that they face. What resonated with me was just that libraries are anchors in communities, but communities need to be reminded that fact. So, I thought it was a good hour spent. So, thank you for the recommendation there. And then, my family attended the Ponytails and the walking tour of Old Escondido, as I already mentioned. But, they loved the Ponytails. They remembered the ponies' names. I believe the ponies were set up. I didn't go, but they attended. Real ponies were in the library's parking lot by the mural.
Sorry. That's very exciting.
But, it was very cool for the kids that attended. And I got immediate feedback that they loved it. So, there you go.
Let's see. I dropped off my ballot at the library a couple of weeks ago. So, that was very nice. My husband and I prefer to go there with our ballots. And then, I've been using Libby a lot to look up home decor magazines, which has been very helpful because my husband and I just bought a new house. So, yeah. Yeah. So, it's been really helpful.
All right. Do we have any other topics to discuss? We're good? Okay. Adjourned. Thank you, Reno.
Thank you.